So this is the September 4th, 2024 Mendon Select Board Meeting and we're calling it to order at 6:31. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded. And so if you please stand and join me for the pledge. Right, so, um, so we do not have any remote participation at this time, although we should be on the lookout in case. So Brendan Chanel is not here in person. He was delayed. In case he does show up online, please let me know so that we can announce his attendance remotely. So, and also, I wanted to announce that we have a potent, that we are potentially entering executive session. We'll have a motion towards the end of the agenda. Some information has come up within the last forty, forty-eight hours that requires an executive session. Also, we can possibly do that tonight. So that will be towards the end of the meeting that we would go into that if all, if the board votes to do so. Any other comments on that, Jeremy? Okay. And let me know if I might be not close enough to the microphones. All right. So are there any citizen's statements and petitions? Okay, I don't see any in the room. I don't see any online. And then, so we'll move right on to item three, the approval of meeting minutes. So we have a number of meeting minutes. So hopefully you all had a chance to read both the August 7th open meeting, open session meeting minutes, as well as executive session minutes from a number of meetings. Okay, all right. So if, so I would be looking for a motion.
If the August 7th separate from the executive session.
Sure, sure. Okay, okay. So, uh, I guess so.
Make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes for August 7th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Stay.
Okay. All right. And then we'll move on to the executive session minutes. And a motion.
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for July 17th, 2024, June 26th, 2024, May 8th, 2024, April 10th, 2024, March 6th, 2024, February 28th, 2024, and February 24th, 21st, 2024.
Okay, any discussion? Yes.
Are these to be, to be released? Or do we need to state they should not be released?
None of them are ready to be released. They all have some component of outstanding issue. So we revise to review these next three weeks, months.
So this motion is just to approve them, not to release them.
A further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. So then the next item on the agenda is the circulation of meeting minutes for review for approval at a future meeting. So we are, we will not be voting on this tonight, but if there's any discussion about it, you're welcome to chime in, Jeremy.
I received one comment from a member Brendan Chanel, who just texted that he's not going to be able to join us tonight. Brendan commented about his abstention from one vote and about the notation of roll call votes. So we will amend the twenty, the twenty-first minutes. So when they're in your packet next month, they'll, they'll reflect that, which is the point of circulating them first. So you all can make comments like that. Just wanted to point out that revision.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. And moving right along to item five, acknowledgements and announcements. So first up, we have Senior Citizen Day, which is September 8th. And there is a, an event at 11:30 a.m. on that date at the Unitarian Church of Mendon, Exbridge. And I believe we do have a guest here to speak to that point.
I just want to say, I don't know whether you signed up.
Actually, could you come up to the microphone, please?
Just where she's coming up to, that is this Sunday.
That is correct.
Sunday, yes.
Honoring Anne Mazza.
Yes.
For all the accomplishments and all the work that she's done for the town. I know you were all invited. I don't know whether you signed up or not, but you had to sign up for the luncheon. But you're always welcome to just come and welcome Anne. She's going to come by fire truck with one of her grandsons and she's expected to arrive at 11:30 and there'll be food sponsored by the Lions. This is primarily their event. And a cake and of course speeches. So I don't know if any of you signed up for it or not, but if you have, I hope to see.
I sent something to Amy in, in person, but I will make, I'll confirm that, that she actually has me on the list.
I'll say. Because I think she already sent the numbers in.
Okay.
Because the Lions are sponsoring it.
Okay.
But anyway, yes, so we're.
Are you there?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Looking forward to it. Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna wait because I want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then the other item on here is Mendon Public Safety Day. Jeremy, do you have some information on this?
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you. So Mendon Public Safety Day, September 21st at 11 a.m. at Klo elementary school, Clough, thank you, elementary school. So we've got, we've got highway, police, fire, mass state police, mass environmental police. A, a number of agencies will be there. An all ages event, we have food truck entertainment. It's a, it's a family friendly event. Really looking forward to it. We had a smaller version of it for Mendon recreation camp folks recently, and it was a lot of fun. Kids climbing all over, all over the public safety vehicles. So I invite the community to come out. It'll, it'll be a great time.
So I don't know, has, has Mendon done something of this scale before for a public safety day? I feel like Mike would know if that's the case.
At different times in the past. I don't think it's been recent. I think it's a great idea. I think particularly with our new fire engines, particularly.
We have a brand new ladder truck.
Well, it's not, it's a brand new pumper. It's not a brand new ladder truck. It's new to us, though. Sure. I know, and I know that the Lions Club are recruiting people to donate golf balls for their first golf ball drop. They're going to initiate at the, I, I believe it's going to be at the Columbus Day, the Men in Country Fair, which is going to be up behind Clough School and the, and the gift barn, the old gift barn. And I believe the fire truck will be there to drop golf balls.
Interesting.
John Dudley has his hand raised.
Oh, oh, thank you. John?
Good evening. I just wanted to give you guys a little more insight into that event. Not only will we have local assets there, we're looking to get the National Guard to come in. Mass DOT, Mass are, like we said, the DCR Rangers will be there, Forest Fire Control. We're also going to have a K-9 demonstration and Lifeflight will be landing that day as a demonstration as well.
Wow.
Sounds like a packed agenda.
Sounds very impressive.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we're looking at, I think we have four different food vendors for the day as well. And we are going to have it emceed by Big Mouth announcing, who's done a number of town events.
Brilliant. Great. Thank you for, thank you for that. All right. Any other comments on acknowledgements and announcements? All right. So let's move on to item six, the senior and community center update. Jeremy?
Thank you. So the building commission is not, the, the senior center building committee is not here tonight. They postponed their meeting yesterday until next week, where I'll be joining them. They're waiting on a few more construction estimates to be able to dial in a number for their efforts on communications. So we're looking at a number smaller than the ask in the spring. I'm not going to commit to a number now because they're still sharpening their pencils on it. But it accomplishes the same senior and community goals while being a smaller overall ask. My presentation next Tuesday will be about the taxpayer impact, depending on what number they give it to me. We're looking, you know, in fiscal '25, we had outside the levy debt service drop off. So when we look at a taxpayer impact, it's going to be important to determine what our base is to talk about a net increase. So that will be a discussion for the committee, a discussion for, for here. I will kind of present net and gross impact numbers as to what debt service looks like. We talked a little bit in the last couple of weeks about short-term actions from federal policymakers and what that means for interest rates and that's, that's good in the short term for us, but we're looking multiple years out before we issue any potential long-term debt. So that's not central to our analysis. So kind of, it's all, it's all driven by the power amount and what the eventual cost of the project will be. But there's lots of tweaks about timing and how we go short-term, long-term, and those will all be discussions between myself and our financial advisor on how we make this most reasonable to the taxpayer. Some more to come on that, but my presentation will be to the, the Building Commission on Tuesday, the 10th.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions on item six, Senior and Community Center update? Let's move along to item seven, the Providence Street Culvert update. And I believe that John Dudley is here to speak to us on that.
I am. Just to follow up on our meeting from a couple of weeks ago where we were asked about warranties for the three conceptual designs to answer that question. The only warranty that we would be able to get would be a one-year warranty on the aluminum structure. The concrete manufacturers will not warranty the box covets. But usually when Ty and Bond, say Ty and Bond does a, a bid spec for us, they put it in that bid that the contractor that is hired is responsible for, say, a five-year warranty on the work. But aside from that, there is no guarantees or warranty on these, these three designs.
If I, if I can interject, John, the warranty you're speaking about is a, is a contractor installation warranty. So it's, it's not on the material itself. It's on, there's an expectation from the industry that the material, especially concrete, lasts a long time if it's installed correctly. So I went and looked up a number of bids from an, uh, other communities in the past few years about concrete culvert replacements. Weston and Drake it were the first couple that I, that I ran across, and they had one-year contractor installed warranties. So these were folks who were doing, these were communities who were doing similar projects to what Mendon is considering now. And they were bidding it out at a one-year contractor warranty for the same source of work we're looking at. So if we can get a five-year warranty, I think that's reasonable and something we should, you know, seek to do in our procurement. But to have a long-term, you know, seventy-five year, whatever warranty we're talking about, it's just not what the industry is producing right now. And I want to make sure that the, the, the board's aware of what we can possibly seek to get.
Do we know if we went with the aluminum structure, would we expect the same language for a five-year warranty or we locked into the one year that John mentioned?
I have not found anything greater than one year on the aluminum.
Need instructions going to valid.
If it's installed correctly, which it's, which is what the warranty.
Right.
Gets you.
All right. So what are, what are next steps with this project?
So John and I, Jonathan and I are both exploring a number of grant opportunities between a culvert replacement grant between, you know, now that this is on the DOT's small bridge repair agenda list. Particular term. We, we have a few grants open to that. I'd like to speak more broadly about using ARPA funds to fund the engineering piece to kick it off because it may exceed the amount available to us under the engineering piece of the small bridge repair program. But that's something that John and I are working on right now. And any, anything you'd like to add, John?
I do. So I know in the past, we, we agreed on the $75,000 for the initial phase of this grant funding. And looking at our budget, at the time, we would be able to handle that. Costs have gone up on things. So our catch base and cleanings for one has gone up significantly this year. And the $25,000 hit out of our $50,000 hired equipment budget is a pretty big hit when we have other stuff to pay for. So I'm hoping, or would like to ask that we hopefully can appropriate an additional $25,000 out of ARPA to cover the rest of the engineering for this, this initial phase.
What does catch base and cleaning have to do with the engineering costs? You lost me on that.
So originally, when we agreed to this, we agreed to a $50,000 from ARPA to pay for the engineering. And the cost of the initial engineering was at seventy-five. And originally I had said we should be able to find it in our budget. Looking at that line item, now prices of things have gone up and that's a significant hit to that line item. So I don't, I'm hoping that we can figure out another solution to pay that additional $25,000.
And is this, there's, this is a different fee or part of the $200,000?
This is, this is the 75,000 initial fee to get us to those three conceptual designs. And then we move forward from there additionally. I did have a conversation with Chris Hul and I said, is, is 200,000 realistic? He goes, it's conservative. He said, you could be under that. You, there's a slight chance you could go over that, but he, we don't know until we actually decide what we're going to do and how we're going to move forward with this project. If that was directed at me, I cannot hear what you said.
Sorry.
No, which?
It was a, a question to Mike. So there was a possibility of a state earmark that through Brian Murray. And so I was wondering if there had been any more news on that front.
No, there were three different earmarks that were put in. There was one earmark which was approved. I don't believe it was the one for the, for, for this project.
Okay. That would probably explain why we haven't gotten any exciting news about that. So I was still hoping that maybe it was still pending in some way, but it doesn't sound like it.
But is there one pending?
Yes.
Do we know which one that's for? So I thought, I thought we were thinking senior center, then I thought we determined it was for the culvert based on our last meeting. So I, I was under the impression the one that got through might be for this project.
I, the short answer is, as I have heard nothing further, it's just that there was one that was approved. I, I believe it was, it was either for this or water. I don't, it was not for that. It was either this or water.
And I can reach out to Brian Murray and find out for sure.
I don't. I, I don't, I don't know about that. I know the three that I specifically spoke to about. Because Mike and I had talked about it in, in one of the Capitol meetings. Water and the senior center.
Okay.
Yes. Now that, now I, I will say that there is, there is another possibility that if you remember when you, you and I, Elena, were at the MMA conference, you know, there is a pool of state money used to provide for, for matching monies if there is a federal grant.
Right.
That we receive. So since, since the state, or since our congressmen's, you know, had, has put an earmark, a federal earmark in for, I think it's 850,000 for the senior center. I don't know how that works, but we should probably circle back.
Yes, we definitely.
To find out if there is a component where we could tap that fund.
Okay.
To help supplement that grant.
Right.
Somehow, even if it was, even if it was administrative costs associated with continuing, because if you recall, there was a great deal of effort that was put in to generate the documentation that the federal delegation needed to actually put this in.
Yes.
So it's worth a shot.
Definitely. All right. Thank you for mentioning that. Just not directly about the culvert, but it does impact our overall funding and potential use of the ARPA money, knowing what else is.
I have an email from A6 that says that, um, at the conclusion of the budget process that the, they had allocated $100,000 to mention for engineering and planning. An earmark, but that, that was.
It could.
That's the last.
Right.
But it's not, but engineering and planning in relation to what?
It doesn't say.
Yeah, because it could be water. The road improvement. Well, if it's, well, if, well, if it is road improvement, then that means that that, then, then.
I'll reforge.
It's there. And a road improvement, of course, could be anything from engineer, well, it says engineering, right? So that answered the question.
John, I, I'll send that to you.
Yeah, but John, you may want to just circle back with Brian Murray, just to verify that it's still in the queue and they can have.
I believe Jeremy, I believe Jeremy just shot him an email asking.
Great.
In terms of the culvert, I think my recollection is that we need to decide on it. That to be tonight, are we going to be on that or?
Definitely, definitely not tonight. We want our engineer back here to discuss it a little bit more. So there's, there's no action tonight. This on here was John and I telling you we're continuing to, to work on the grant funding piece and what, how we think we're going to be able to stack part of this funding structure. So the earmark is definitely part of it, and we'll get back with the engineer and come back to the board with a little bit more information on what the suggestion from both the engineer and highway is.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any more updates or questions about the Providence Street Culvert? Thank you for joining us, John. Uh, so up next is item eight, so the Town, Land and Recreation Field Committee. So Jeremy, I believe you had some questions for us or updates?
Yeah, thank you. So I sat down to write the charter earlier this week and felt without direction on. So I, I went back and I watched the discussion and everything I kept writing was about land use and economic development. And I, I wanted a little bit more direction from the board on what the charge, what your anticipation of the charge of this committee would be. If we were hyper-focused on recreation fields and active recreation, or if this was a broader charge about town-owned land, or if this was an analysis of land in town writ large, whether it was town-owned or not. And I wanted a little bit direct, a little bit more direction on what your anticipation of this committee would be before I wrote something that hemmed it in specifically.
Well, I, I think we already have a, a land use committee. So this was specifically about sports fields. And it would be land-owned, town, town-owned fields, town-owned land to be developed or utilized for sports fields.
To some extent, also, I think it would be worth having a discussion with the land use committee about, because it's the land use committee, the way it's described in the, in the town bylaws is somewhat narrower than it is in practice.
I don't like that solution.
Okay. So, uh, but I think, I think it would be worth having that conversation because I think the question about sort of looking at land as a town-owned land as a whole, I mean, that I think is something that land use committee.
Well, I agree.
But I think if we have a specific ask about, you know, a lot of what we talked about last time was having action items of a quest from the land use committee. But that might also be worth formulating at this stage.
Yeah, but I think that the, the whole point of the discussion last time was to develop a committee that was going to study and come up with ideas for sports fields.
So I kind of had a broader view on it. I, I mean, I threw out the term steering committee. I actually sent you both a document with deliverables on it. That spoke to, to, to the clear, a clear off-ramp to a sports field development committee, whether it's this small, like this committee of committee members or a subcommittee off that with sports field, youth sports groups, et cetera, broader focus on sports. Does that make sense? But I think, I honestly think we need to have, for, for strategically, we need to be, be able to articulate what our plan is around town and land as it pertains to some of these projects. They wanted to bring committees together, planning, et cetera, land use. So there's agreement across town committees on what we think we should be doing. So we don't have questions, say, on Taft Orchard. And we say, let's put the senior center there. And then we say, well, fire, fire station could go there, or this could be done this way, or I'd want some commercial there. I, I want a committee that can bring some clarity to what we intend to do with it. Otherwise, it's a circular discussion and we don't come to a decision.
It feels like it's a trap for the act, the act of recreation, but it's, they're not going to get action for quite some time.
Oh, I, I, I see, I see. Well, when we talked about last week, a quote steering committee would basically have a subcommittee that would say, recreation fields, everybody raise a hand? Yep, yep, that's where, okay, break off. Go do your recreational field. It doesn't.
Why are we not able to give that information to the select board, our existing staff, the possible?
Because I think the select board has some, well, honestly, everybody is doing what they should be doing, but they're also doing silos. The select board probably needs to take a role to drive a recommendation back. I was just trying to be more collaborative.
Well, I mean, if, are we the glue or you're saying this committee is the glue? I guess that's, because we have to do that in a lot of places.
Right.
We're not really.
I, I think that, I mean, there's, there's some research that needs to be done. I think that's, I think, I guess that's sort of how I'm interpreting what Mike is asking for is charge somebody with doing some of this legwork?
It's not unlike the bylaw, your chart. You've, the, the select board is appointing a committee to do some of the legwork and bring it back so we're informed around decision-making, things like that.
How do we whittle that? I didn't see that. Maybe you said it already. But like, how do you whittle down that charge so that you're not overtaking the mission of parks, land use? I don't know who else, forest, um, those committees that have their own mission that will, in a Venn diagram, overlap with this committee. So.
Well, right now, I don't think there are, there are committees that are charged with driving some of this stuff. And parks might be the closest thing to it because I think land use is acquisition. So once we acquire it, what are we doing with it? At the point of acquiring it.
Well, they took it upon themselves to make suggestions.
Yes.
Because they, they felt they were the experts and because they were charged with it.
So, oh, so the, the document, um.
Yeah.
Templatized.
So, right, is templated. So, so I think, I think that some of that had to do with grant eligibility, that this work needed to be done in order to, yeah, so we, we needed this. I, I don't know specifically, but that's, I, I recall Anne saying that was part of it. And actually, Dan, I believe Dan was involved with some of that. Dan Byer I sees online. So like, some, some of that legwork has been done. And so it's, it's been started. So there's, there's a strong foundation for it, but there hasn't been a direct plan for
Action.
For action. And so, and I think, and I think that's, I guess, what we're hoping to have.
Like the words need to be.
Yes.
Is that, that the outright, that the mission should then be a direct plan of action.
Right, some suggests, right. So well, and that's what the, I guess, the hope of the deliverables would be like, what are the, the actions that we can take, right?
I just don't want them to produce another report and then we need another.
Right.
Action.
So, right, I think we'd be hoping they would be, some of the research would be collating the existing reports and research and evaluating it. And evaluating it with, you know, with the various needs. But I know, I guess, Dan, did you, did you want to add to that about? The existing. Research that's been done or other points?
Um, I, I think if you're referencing the open space and rec plan, I think, yeah, I just, everything you just said. It had to get done and we seem, you know, Anne and myself primarily did it. Because we, if we didn't have that, we weren't getting any grants. But generally, the parks would take on that type of a project.
Are you doing that from a land use perspective or from the parks perspective?
My involvement was as the director of Parks and Recreation, and I think Anne's involvement was. You know, I don't know if you want to say land use or just, you know, that she's kind of been the champion of a lot of this stuff in town for years.
It's a collab, right? So like land use and parks collaborated to create.
Right, yes.
And this would be an expansion of that.
It's almost bringing it down. Right now, the template says, we have this parcel, it can be used for this, this or this. No definitive.
Which, right, right. And, and, right, so there would be a lot of questions I could imagine coming out of that. So to use this parcel for that. What would, you know? What would that cost the town? For example, we need, in order to make a plan for any of these. Properties, we need to start that process of, you know, digging in and getting estimates. And. I think this is where having a group of people who have a goal will start to, to, you know. Work through some of those questions.
I think one of the reasons we talked about sort of a, a committee of committee, CPA, is that. We don't want to step on toes, but we want to drive agreements so that. As, as the town committees and boards are making recommendations of the tax people, there's no. I want to use it for A, I want to use it for B. It's like, no, we think this is the right use and this is sort of the. Information you need to move forward if you so choose.
Right. So like at town meeting, the scenario is like at town meeting and then we're trying to allocate money for a thing.
Yeah, right.
And the, the reasoning is, well, we did all this research. This is, this is the reason, like, we put disc golf there, we put.
Yeah.
You know, football there and we put soccer there. There's, you know, that's why.
And the other thing it can funnel into the capital plan in general. This committee should be identifying, say, here's a thing we want to do. Everybody agrees to it and then it gets pushed into the overall capital plan for planning and execution or further.
All right, I'm nodding. Jeremy, back to your original question about direction.
Yeah, so I feel like I've gotten a lot of, a little bit disparate stuff here. I'm going to do what I went back. And last time did and rewatched this to try to distill it down to individual points. My.
Agree, I'll agree with Mike. So when you go back and rewatch.
So my.
Just explaining himself to me and I.
Yeah, and I have, I have, I, I have, I have Mike, I have Mike's document, which is something that, that, that you've aren't privy to, which, which helps me a little bit. So. I will, I will craft something which was, I think, broader than I initially anticipated and perhaps narrower than Mike initially anticipated. And then circulate that to the committee and get your specific feedback rather than this general guidance. And then we can go from there in an additive or a subtractive way.
So I think Mike Goddard, you, your, your concern is you don't want to lose sight of the big picture, right? Like in, in terms of, of land use. And I think that that's an important warning to us for any, for any project that we do. And so. I think if, if there is a mechanism for having that, whether it is. Engaging the land use committee, for example, to do that, or, or having some other. Steering committee. But I think, I think is. I could imagine doing it different ways. So like if, so I guess. Like your vision was a bigger committee with subcommittees, one subcommittee focused on fields and the other. Potentially the big committee focused on the, the, the big picture.
Yeah, to be honest, fields is the heavy lifting.
Right.
You don't want to get stuck in analysis paralysis. I want to move on the fields.
Right.
But. That is, you're going to need to pull, that's one where you need to pull broader people in to do it.
Yes.
That doesn't preclude in parallel fashion that this committee is also looking at the, there aren't that many parcels.
Right, right.
Right? And fields is a high priority.
Right.
Personally, I think from tech, defining what we're going to do on the orchard is a high priority.
Yes.
Value to the town, you know, in terms of whether it's. Mixed use, housing, senior community center. We've got work going on in the corner in front of the planning board now. By a private, you know.
Six, man, are you saying like you feel like you could see a subcommittee just untapped?
No, I could, I could see every other parcel. It's like, we think this is the right thing. Let's make a recommendation. I think fields is going to be heavy.
Right.
Yeah. And fields, get, get fields going.
So, but does this seem like something where we could ask, say, land use committee to do that part that you're concerned, that concerned about sort of the. Evaluating any potential plans for a parcel with respect to all of the.
One thing I think. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure exactly who's on land use.
Right.
But I think you need Jack and Dylan involved, you need planning board involved because.
So, so there is a planning board member of land use committee as well as conservation. Mission. So, I mean, it might be, I mean, it, it might be worth having a conversation with.
Back to Anne and saying.
Yes, is this, so to not lose sight of this question because it has come up, right? It came up with the senior and community center with that parcel and it came up with the disc golf. This, these questions come up whenever there's a project that's like, oh, well, what else are we, what else could we use that land for?
Yeah, I think it would be nice if residents could go to our website and not just see the land that we own, but. Right, what we're planning activities.
Right.
You're exactly right that almost every, it feels like almost every amendment about land. Or every warrant article about land, there's a question about the deeper analysis.
And I guess it will be preemptive so that instead of having people who want fields, raise the hand when we're talking about senior community center. To say, what about fields? They see fields in plan. It's like, there is something, we've got traction on fields. We've got traction around. Some ways, economic development or housing, the housing production plan, which we'll talk about in sixteen, you know? It's just, you know, starts to kind of. Create that mosaic where everything's sort of heading in, you know, tied together.
Still want to paralyze everything.
All right. So, so Jeremy, do. Do you have next steps in mind? I know, I know there's still not as much. I sense there's not, it's still not as much clarity as you would like.
Yeah, I am. So I. I commit to circulating a charter to the board.
Okay.
Same, ask a question would be easier to break this down into bite sized pieces, create a, a, a committee for fields. And separate the other stuff and move on it.
Maybe, and yeah, not, not lose sight of the other stuff, break, right, so, right, yeah, so.
Right, I'm just saying, from your standpoint, would it be easier to narrowly focus these things and get them moving? Because I'm more around getting them moving.
Right.
Trying to craft the perfect solution.
Yeah, I. I think we're most effective when we give groups of people a narrow mandates with clear objectives.
Which is where I started when I said, I, I think what you should focus on is coming up with a, with a charter for a committee that's focused on. Fields, what fields we need and where they should be done. And it does not preclude the larger focus that Mike talked about.
Right, so, right, so.
Think it, but I think based on the people that were here at the meeting who voiced their concern. To, to, to make Mike's point, that's, I, I'm for moving on too, and that seems to be a focus of a great many people. I think it would satisfy. A concern.
Right.
So that would be my suggestion.
So potentially decouple, not, so still, still achieve both goals, but not bundled into the same. Committee.
Oh, yeah, I'll say my approach after hearing this would be to get, to give a narrow mandate to the committee. With a secondary mandate of referring these larger questions to land use, referring these larger questions to. To parks or to planning. So to be cognizant and take a wide lens. When viewing these projects, but the ultimate deliverable from the committee would be narrow in terms of recreation, active recreation fields.
I just don't focus on that. Don't widen it. If you're going to go that route, I'm going to be very clear on A to B, get it done. Governance and to cut the, the, the broader picture of how things fit together. That's maybe something else. Don't, I wouldn't cloud it.
Would you still want this to be? A committee that's made up of representatives from committees plus open up seats broadly? What, what would the ideal composition of this committee be for the board?
I, I think so. I think that the composition we discussed last time, Mike.
Yeah, I think, I think the ideal committee, like typically like any committees that we do are townspeople who are interested. Some of them are already on other committees and some of them are simply citizens that. Don't know where they fit in and they would like to, they're, they're interested in this and they want to, they're passionate about it. So they'd like to be involved. So I would. Invite anybody.
Open up all seats.
That, that's my suggestion. It's just my opinion.
Jason, Mike, any?
Yeah, I mean, it's being driven by constituencies. Being a part of it. The other part is that, you know, we're all aging and don't have kids using these systems as much. I have an opinion that I formed when I was coaching and being a part of all of that, but I, it's probably not current. So.
Right.
It would be good to have that.
Yeah, and I say, I think we, I think we're all agreed that we want to have that engagement, especially where we know there are like. Very, like, there's, there's an active community group where they have a. That, that Mendon Upton Community Group, I think they call it. They have a specific focus, but there are a lot of people involved with that. With that committee that might also, these, these are not like mutually exclusive. They have like overlapping. Interests. And so there can be. Fully, we can achieve more than one goal. So I think, yeah, I think, does that answer your question? We, I think.
Yep.
Okay. Great, sure. Right. Any more to add?
That was useful. Thank you.
We talked about a number of participants last week, didn't we? So we're still at seven?
I thought we said seven.
And last week was five or last, last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, was five from specific town committees, representatives from land use, planning, parks. And then two seats that we are going to post as vacancies to just. But what I got from this discussion was to just post all the seats as vacancies.
Oh, no, I thi- I think, I think. I think two is, sorry, I think we want the, the, the existing committee and board and committee engagement, I think.
So I gue- I guess the question I would have, do you have a, do you see a difference between voting committee members and engagement? The process from the board. Standpoint. Because, for instance, every youth sports group in Mendon and Upton. Will be engaged and they will actively engage. Do, are they voting members of this committee? Is, are the committee members that are jumping into this committee, they're already on committees, the voting, you know. I would look, kind of whatever you put in writing, let's take a look at it. But I just think that's a consideration.
I feel like every youth sports team is kind of automatically represented.
Well, we, we talked to them at.
Right, well, and, but I mean, I, I feel like the, um, once this committee is started, they could. Figure out how to engage those committees.
This committee is going to have to engage those groups from a planning, assessment, needs analysis, you know.
Right, right. But I mean, but I, but I, I've. But I feel like having, starting from a core group of experienced. Committee and board members that they could, that could be one of the, like, maybe one of the tasks is, you know, they could decide. How to engage these other community groups and get their input.
Right.
I, I, I guess I don't feel like we as a select board need to decide that.
That, this committee, whatever it's made up of, has to do a needs analysis to say.
Right, but I mean, but also, but how, like, to have a plan for their community outreach and engagement. But I do think, I mean, I think having, you know, the, the five members that are, you know, representing other boards and committees. Plus two other townspeople. I mean, I think we are potentially asking for. Not tiny time commitment. So I don't know how many people, like, people could potentially still volunteer, right? If you look at the model of the senior center, the senior and community center group, there is, there are the voting members. And then there are a lot of other volunteers that still, they don't vote, but they still have input. They still have a voice and their voice is listened to. So I think that would be a good model, but I think it, it is useful to have voting members that are from the, you know. From the broader community that are not necessarily just representing other boards and committees. Yeah, the land use committee has that model as well. Sort of the combination of board and committee representatives plus other community members.
Just because this has shifted a couple of times. When we talk about the five board and committee representatives, we're talking about land use, planning, parks. Conservation is one.
Not, uh, so I, I don't know that conservation wanted.
They wanted to weigh in on the solution, I think.
Right, so, yeah, I don't, I don't remember the specific, so I'd have to look back at it. I'd have to look back at the minutes.
I'll do that, John.
Yeah.
But, okay. As long as we're committed to what we were at last meeting, I'll just make sure.
Right.
Stick to that.
Yeah, so, yeah, select board, planning, parks, land use. Oh, CPA, I mean, maybe, but.
Still, I think, you know, it's, there's some edge groups, but I think Dan and Anne.
Right. Oh, wait, I see hands, there are hands. Sorry, I see Mike Crager, your hand is number one.
All right, thanks, Alina. I guess, couple of things, one from a finance committee perspective, given that, you know, I'm assuming that this won't be free. I think finance committee should be involved in some way. We can talk about what that means. Whether it's just, you know, attending as a volunteer or part of, you know, an official seat on the committee. I think we should just talk about what that is. The, the second piece is, is there an equivalent? Committee in Upton that is already looking at this, given all the youth sports are, you know, Nipmuck, Mendon, Upton based. I feel like this is something we should be doing in concert with them, so that Mendon isn't bearing the full financial burden and seeing if there's opportunities to do this in Upton. As well and just having a, a, a master plan for fields that covers both towns.
Those are, those are great questions. I know. Right. To some extent, we were looking specifically for the, the Mendon properties, but you're right that it would be useful to know what's being done. And in parallel in Upton. In addition to, I know that Mendon Upton Community Group, they're working directly with the, the school district. But I don't know, it would be certainly worth looking into whether Upton is also looking into other recreational fields. But I guess this, that would, that would be another question that I would put to this newly formed committee. To do that research and potentially engage, you know, with, with Upton on those questions. But those, those are great points, Mike.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't expect to solve it here right now, but I think we should do that, right? That, that committee, the previously mentioned committee is really focused on working with the school. And upgrades to the school fields. But for, you know, as, as a youth sports coach, you know. There's going to be a lot of interest from the youth sports boards and that represents both Mendon and Upton. And I think we should go in as a. As a united front. And if Mendon and Upton can share the burden of improving everything for both of our kids, since we, we all put our kids together. I think that would be beneficial for both towns and help, you know, spread, you know, where the, the spending and the costs come from.
I mean, I think, yeah, that, that seems like a great, a great point and question to put to the committee once we. Form it. And then as far as like the finance committee involvement. We had not talked about a finance committee member of this, so I don't know if other board members want to weigh in on that.
I mean, as interested parties to volunteer, yeah, but as a FinCon member, they, I think they're gonna. Mike, I think you're gonna have opportunity to see this through either through the capital planning process or through any action that needs to go for a vote, right? So whether or not. You know, I would defer and say if they want to participate, they certainly can. But I think there's going to be other checkpoints, once we get to action, that's going to require FinCon.
And, and I mean, maybe that can be in the description to like, give opportunity for. I mean, maybe that can be in the description to like give opportunity for. FinCon to weigh in um at different stages in this.
Yeah, that that works, like what I would like to make sure happen is that a whole slew of, you know, a whole slug of work doesn't get completed. And it ends up on our desk when a ton of work has been done and finished, and then it's sort of coming in as checks. Whether it's part of an official, you know, uh seat. Or we just, you know, try to volunteer and go as much as possible, or it's written into the charter that, especially if we're working with both towns, that, you know, the finance committee needs to be part of a review process in some way. Uh, I don't know exactly what the answer is, and I I I like the the latter portion of just making sure we're part of. The process as we go along through checks and balances to make sure that things are being driven in the right way. Financially, at least, uh I think that would be. That would be good, and you know, we can keep keep that conversation open, we don't have to solve it right here, so.
And like, I mean, what I'd love to see is like. When it comes down to FinCom. In their official capacity, reviewing warrant articles. Your questions would be answered. Well, before you have the, you know, your budget review meeting or the warrant review meetings and.
Right.
You know, it's gonna be pretty clear, you have full understanding of what's going on and why and what the logic is, you know what I mean?
Yep, understood.
Mike, and then I see Dan, you also have a hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest. First CPA is already a representative committee with members of other boards, so probably you unless there's somebody that's really interested, I think you'd end up duplicating. And having two members from another board, but in terms of numbers, instead of trying to figure it out, maybe just put it out there and see what kind of interest you get. I mean, you don't want a committee of thirty, but if you end up getting nine people. I would go with that. Maybe you don't need to decide that tonight, you know, see what kind of interest there is in the community. Plus, maybe from these representative boards like parks, planning, etc. And then. Make a decision.
Their precedence for kicking off a committee and letting it grow.
Yeah, definitely, we just did it with the zoning bylaw review committee.
So what I'd want to do is at least get a quorum so they can get started on it. And as people express interest. You can grow the committee or they can be decide if they want to join or be a volunteer, you know what I mean?
Yep.
But whatever decisions made, I just don't want to. I don't want to slow the process down.
True, I mean, if we if we say nine people and we. Don't get.
Right.
Right, but once you, once you set the number, the quorum is based on the number.
So you can say a a a.
Determine for the commit.
Membership no less than seven, no greater than nine, or something like that, so if you if you get four. That's a quorum for your on the smaller end. Get to set your own rules.
So that, I mean, that, yeah, I mean, I think. Sounds reasonable to me, leaving additional spaces open in case there are a lot more people who want to be involved at this level. We know there are going to be people who want to be involved, but we don't yet know at what level they want to. Commit. Alright, thank you, thank you for that, Dan. Alright. Any other, okay. Do you have?
I have.
You have a plan?
Something to go on.
Okay, alright, great, so so will we will uh will you be able to circulate a draft of this before our next meeting? Okay. Is that a draft that could also be shared with? Invited to the meeting last time? Okay. Great. So hopefully we'll talk about this next time and it'll be more. And yeah, well, hopefully we'll we'll. Yeah, hopefully we'll come out of that with with a plan and then. We'll be able to post and get new members. Alright, great, thank you.
Speaking of new members.
Okay. So, ah, yes, so uh. Nine is review and consider appointments contingent on completing ethics training if applicable. So Jeremy, do you want to walk us through these people?
Yeah, so we've got three appointments here, um two of them, uh we we have Mike Crager on to talk about finance committee, I'll start the first Stephen Pryor as a traffic constable for the Mendon Police Department. This is a designation that was born after um. Post standards, there used to be special reserve police, which there still are, um but traffic constable um allows folks to work traffic details in town. Without going through an entire um. Post approved academy, so these are retired. Uh, police officers, so this, the letter from Chief Kersey, it's in your packet, um retired officer Stephen Pryor, um so this allows. Um, a re- retired official to work traffic details in the manner that they did in a prior to post without full police powers.
Alright, so um I mean, do we want to deal with the, I I know that that. Motion suggests all together, but do we want to?
Sure, you can separate it out and then have Mike talk, Mike Crager talk about the other two.
So do we want to, um, I would, I would be willing to accept a motion about the traffic constable.
I move to appoint Stephen Pryor, traffic constable for the Men and Police Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, thank you, so uh. Welcome Stephen Pryor as traffic constable. Alright, so then our other points are both related to or other items are related to the finance committee. So we have two, two names, um. So Jeremy, do you want to talk a bit about that?
Yeah, I will defer to Mike quickly, but um we had a vacancy and then um we had an expired term when Adam Griffin um resigned when he moved out of town. Uh, so we thank Adam Adam Foris, two years of service to the to the finance committee. And so both of these individuals interviewed with finance committee um earlier, um and were positively recommended, but I'll I'll defer to Mike um to talk more specifically um about their candidacies.
Sure, thanks, um, sorry, I put my camera on, I'm in a parking lot during hockey practice, but um. The uh both both candidates uh interviewed very well, I think they are both uh very much qualified, they are both excited and uh very much ready to jump in. And uh volunteer both with uh, you know, direct finance committee uh requirements and seeing where they can add their expertise. Uh, from a finance perspective with any other boards and committees looking for input, so uh we highly recommend both candidates for approval.
And if I can add, both their letters of interest are in your packets tonight, um Jesse Curl has um extensive experience in private sector finance, uh while William Hadad has um over a decade experience in state level finance, um and I think their their skills will complement the committee well.
And so the uh I know the there's. The two different, two different um. Terms and then uh, you know, two different names, so what what is the rationale for putting one name with each of the uh? Is it each of the vacancies? Is it in order?
Probably what they probably what.
Right.
How much time they wanted to to serve, so.
What is that, is that the case, was there like a sequence of these applications, Mike?
Yeah, I don't I don't know that, Mike, uh. It it can go, it can go either way, so I I don't want to put Mike on the spot because this was not a decision Mike made, this was us putting the agenda together with the individuals in the order. Um, and the the um information that we got from the town clerk on the term expiration dates, so.
Okay.
It can, it can be switched without difference, and it would be my anticipation that both of these individuals would, um, you know. It is our hope that they would continue to serve and want to continue to serve and be useful members of the committee beyond the expiration date.
Since since it's written this way, I'd move to appoint uh Jeffy Jesse Curl to the uh finance committee unexpired term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And William Hadad to the finance committee to fill the vacancy for a three year term to expire on six thirty twenty seven.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm really excited. This will be a full committee.
Full voting committee, it's great.
Excellent.
Great, alright, uh so then if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you, so welcome to to both of them, I didn't see either of them online tonight, so but if they've watched this recording, so thank you both for stepping up. Uh, we appreciate your willingness to help our community in this way. Alright, great, so. Next up is item ten, the select board policies and procedures. So uh. There is a draft that was circulated, it's it's a shame that Brendan is not able to be here for this since he's been the one who has uh spearheaded that original document drafting, um but Jeremy, do you want to update us?
Yeah, certainly, um so um after prior direction from the board, the uh approach was to take all of the comments, incorporate them into a draft and circulate it and then discuss from there. So I don't. I don't know that this is the. Most productive venue for it, but we can either go through comments um as a board, Katie compiled them all together here for us, um we can go through um the individual comments. Um, or the board can submit comments on comments. Both seem a little. Tedious, but that's the work of creating a a detailed policy document, um so I kind of.
Right.
Defer to to your.
So so we had. Floated the idea at some point that we would identify specific sections to talk through. So I mean, it might be, it might be helpful to us to like to do that. To not not expect to talk through, say, the whole document and all of the comments thereof, but um. It looks like we there are comments in most of the sections of the document.
Do we have a procedure for coming to a conclusion?
I don't know that we do, and this was where I was, I don't know if Brendan had such visions, uh, yeah, I need a policy.
You have a policy on developing policy?
Nice if we could. Right, if we could.
Uh, the other question I had, which I don't expect an answer from, throwing yet another question out. Some of these are comments.
Yes.
Are questions, so when they're questions. Who answers?
What?
Who answers?
So to some extent, I think they're, right, I think they're discussion points.
Cause I think maybe that's like. If it's a comment and you're not asking to take action, you're a comment. Then if we could split the questions out, make decisions on the questions in a meeting. Right, and not actually go and review everything again and knock those out.
I mean, I think a lot of the comments are implicitly questions, like should we change this, you know?
Right.
So. I'm not sure that there is a, for me, there is not a clear distinction between the the questions and the comments, they they are all, I think.
I think scheduling is scheduling sections makes sense.
Right.
And I would just say, has everyone had a chance to get feedback in? So if if what I'm looking at is comprehensive of everybody's feedback. Next time we get, we could go through these sessions pretty quickly, could give you a chance to read the questions or comments and say, I completely disagree with Mike saying. Say that.
Well, I mean, the, I'm actually curious if there's the color coding meant anything.
Yeah.
Oh, cool, okay, so it's random.
Okay, so yeah, I know I'd I'd sent you a commented version, so I think maybe it kept. My 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 ABs, so AB is is me.
And then KM says MG notes at the end of it, um so I. Well, we can take sections one through three, take all the comments, I can make them into a more bulleted. Readable thing.
Or you can. Take out, I mean, there another thing I was thinking about was like taking out anything that's. Not going to be talked about, right, like. If you only need to talk about like the board shall call elections, and that's something we need to talk about, but we don't actually need. We can approve, the board shall be the licensing authority for the town in accordance with, you know, like if we could. Check off some boxes and say what parts of this are done. That would be pretty helpful, I don't know how if you, I don't know how to do that, but if it's not commented on, is it approved?
Yeah, what I what I fear about that is, you know. Section six says, shouldn't we do things one, two, and three? And then I, you know, a possible outcome is, well, section four already commented on that, and that's why section six doesn't add.
Okay. Alright, my attempt at suppositions.
I. You you I know it was a joke, but we do need a policy review policy.
Yeah, no, no, we absolutely do, because like there has to be a procedure and like a definition of done, or we'll just.
I I'm I'm coming across this too, I'm reviewing our personnel policy and just going through with a literal red pen and crossing things out, and I still don't have a great approach on how to present that to you all, this is where we were, this is where I think we should be.
Right.
You think we should be.
So it might be, I mean, one, one way to go about this would be to just. Break this down like into, I don't know, two or three chunks and say, next meeting, we are. Like, everybody still read the whole thing so that we know what's. What's where, but we. Talk through the, any uh comments, questions, or discussion points for, say, a set of subsections. I know I had a lot more uh questions on the appointments section, but we like. I think we did start talking about the beginning of the document. But we could just.
Like one through.
Right, so. Right, so we we could, I mean, I guess I'd be in favor of just, you know, deciding how many chunks to break this into. And get putting a date on it, that this is sort of when we're talking about this chunk, so if you have comments of, you know. Read this comments that people have put in so far. Decide whether you agree about it or not, and then we can hopefully. Decide on whether to make edits based on those comments or not. I mean, and then, you know, keep it, you know, and aim aim, yeah, so I guess. We've been trying to do it sort of in the ten to twenty minute chunks, but maybe we need. Maybe we need more uh expectation of closure.
So how does the board feel about up through and including board liaisons? So that means we're talking about. Like about four pages, purpose, order of precedence, authority and role of the select board, structure of the select board. And then board liaisons. And we'll talk about those sections. Next, next meeting.
Twenty five major sections. And actually, the last section is almost a policy and policies, so maybe we should expand up.
So do you think we need? More sections for next time, right, so. So maybe like add in a little bit more for next time? Okay, alright.
Right, because the next one after that is a. Town organizational chart.
It would be nice to have that conversation after our. Train.
Great. Katie and I can make that a more digestible and. Discussable. Document um for next meeting.
Thank you.
It's not a word.
Works for me. Uh, alright, so uh. Okay, so item eleven, um. Acceptance of donation of the little property crossing Trask Road, Jeremy?
Yeah, so um I I spoke with um our attorney uh both. Thursday and Tuesday about this, um and it seems through their title search that this parcel um has not been recorded as severed from the larger parcel at Trask Road. It seems muddy enough that um our council was not comfortable creating um the documentation for us to accept the donation. Um, so I've talked with.
Just explain it again, because my understanding is there's a separate tax bill. And there's a separate deed.
Let me pull up the exact. Based on a review of the deed that is referenced for eleven Trask Road, that deed goes to one thirty three North Ave and covers the farm fifty five acres. I do not see any separate deed or plan for the division of the land for the strip, which supposedly abuts a town parcel.
As I've, and this is like Groundhog Day. I discussed this with her, there is, there is, we started with a tax bill. There is a separate tax bill.
There is.
With this parcel.
I have it on my desk.
Okay. So does that tax bill for that parcel? Reference this deed?
That. I I defer to town council. I, I defer to town council on that. I, beyond my expertise on real estate law.
If I can just make a suggestion for you to call Katie to me at the registry of deeds.
Great suggestion.
Give her that tax bill. And tell her the, give her the re-digest condensed version of what we're trying, because time is of the essence. And ask her, and cause Katie will know. And probably Katie will probably well, just call Katie to me.
Thank you for that suggestion.
It's not the first time. Certainly to him, there's board meetings, but.
Right. Yeah. So any other comments on that item?
Yeah, it, it was not at a position where council was ready to give us a document. So I will thank you for that suggestion and I will try that angle as well.
So moving on to item 12, special town meeting article discussion. So on that point, so we have received some articles from the, or potential articles from the board of assessors. And I think it might be worth discussing our process for the warrant. Jeremy had some questions about that since this is his first town meeting that he's doing with us. And so I don't know that we have this written in our, I don't think we have that written in our, in our policy document. So it might be useful for us to to talk through a little bit the process.
So when Katie and I were looking for language and what this motion should look like, there wasn't anything apparent in the last couple of years about reviewing individual articles that were presented to the board and then adding them versus kind of staff compiling them into a overall warrant for the board to review at the end. So I don't know if the process either or, either by policy regulation statute or preference is to vote individual articles and say, yes, we want to add this to a warrant. Or we just kind of put everything together at the warrant or at the end and you review it at the end.
My understanding is they are an elected board. So if they want to put something on the warrant.
So there is, there is a difference between, sorry to interrupt. There is a difference between an elected board presenting an article versus you know, my office or
Individual, right. Anything, any, any office would bring it to whoever the, whoever their appointing authority is, you would bring it to us. An elected board.
Right. So, but still it's this board that is responsible for putting together the warrant as a whole.
But my experience has been that the warrant has been a living document. As it gets created, we have also been reviewing it. Like it's, it's been happening. This is my experience. Facts here, but my experience is we, we get articles, they go on, we talk about them. It's happening until it closes.
Well, that, that's the collaborative successful way to do it. So that you actually have articles that will actually pass at town meeting and be legal.
Right. But I guess the, the question, I, there's still some question about like procedure. So the, the articles get sent. So I think like historically it was, was it the executive assistant along with the town administrator who together compiled it and sort of, so these articles are, they're, they're not yet, they, they, they need to be given a place in the warrant. So I think, I mean, his, I feel like historically, like in my time, a lot of it happened in the offices behind the scenes. And then we saw a draft that was already compiled with potential numbers. And who was, who brought, brought it to the board? And then we would sometimes do a little bit of like rearranging, like
Are these specific to the board of assessors?
Yes, both. There are two, they both are specific.
What's the gist of the two items?
COLA increase to a veteran's tax abatement. There hasn't been one in a number of years. And 15 years seems, and then an additional abatement that was included in, it's I believe was included in the most recent budget or not, the HERO Act after the budget, which provides an additional veteran's tax abatement.
Well, in, in that case, those would just, again, you would put those in the, in the warrant document for us to approve it. But again, I, I don't believe, I don't believe this board has the you know, there are certainly some articles that we'll, that we sponsor, right, that we agree with. But something like that, that if the board of assessors wants them on there, then they need to go on there.
Right. Oh, right. But, but I mean, yeah, still the, the, I guess it's just, it's the process. So I think, right. So
So I'm clear on the elected boards.
To give you a historical perspective and Mike Gardner can certainly correct me because he's been, been around the block as well. But the historical perspective is that you, you as the town administrator and in your executive assistant, compile the document. And again, there's two types, well, there's really three types, right? There's, there's articles that you know, various appointed officials would come to whoever the appointing authority is and say, I'd like to put this article on. And then we wordsmith it and put it in there i- if we decide it's going to be in there. There's boards and committees like the, you know, the elected planning board or the elected assessors that have an article they want to put on there. And you know, they're put on there. Normally we would also have to the town administrator and, and assistant and administrative assistant and council wordsmith those as well. So they actually have a, you know, so they are legally correct, so that they'll pass correctly. The third one is citizen petition, which I believe needs 100 signatures at a special town meeting. And, and the way those work, it's supposed to be up to the person presenting it to get the, the language right. We're not supposed to interfere or change the way it was written in the petition. And that's, I don't know if that gives you any clarity, but that's the expectation.
It does. Thank you. Just because this is going to happen, the zoning bylaws review committee is going to bring suggestions to town meeting for articles. They are a committee appointed by select board.
Yeah. So they, those would go through you. And, you know, we delegate to you to, to go through that. So if there are things that make sense, then you would bring those to us. And we would discuss it at a
But, but the zoning or bylaw?
That's a big, right.
That goes through planning.
That's why.
Zoning would go to the planning.
So that's, that's why I was constantly asking, it's a committee appointed by select board.
Yes, but but if it's a bylaw change, general bylaw. General bylaw, no, but a general bylaw would go in front of this board to go on there. If it's a zoning bylaw, then it would go in front of the planning board.
So like operation. Two of you would compile. It's a living document. I agree with that. But I mean periodically review it as we get closer to the closes. There is one thing that I think, you know, Mike probably agree, we kind of try to get to this, but my previous time on this board, it was asked on the floor by taxpayer, what does the select board feel? Do you support this? And the select would at that time never actually took a formal vote. So the board couldn't really say whether we do or we don't. But that might be something maybe on, for, for the procedural document or even in this process. This board, even though we don't have to, we may want to formally vote to either support or not support an article in the event we're asked that question.
But I think it's, but I think it's important to point out that the way that we've done it, at least in current iteration of this is the, the, the board or committee with the authority has to vote to put it on the warrant. So any, so any articles, any articles that are on that warrant that are under the purview of this board, this board has to take a vote to put it on the, on the, on the warrant. But you're right. I, I mean, I suppose we could, somebody
It'd almost be ceremonial.
Right. Cause we don't have a statutory, but if we're asked the question, what does the select board think? And we've never actually.
That was, that was my principal question, whether there was an action that the board takes to endorse the inclusion of a warrant.
Again, I think the process of creating the warrant. Right? That, that vote happens.
But, but we, we will defer.
Let it go to the floor. We just say, no, the taxpayer, right. That doesn't mean that this board is in full support of that article. We just, we just say that it's, it would be legal in its language. If it's asked, it would be binding. I just like this person, we can, I would prefer that we actually weigh in, even though we don't have to, on what we think about the
Any, any dinner?
Nobody may ask before it gets to the floor.
And, and we did that. Right. So we, we, we have, we have some times. Possibly you, maybe you suggested it at the, the time. I don't remember. So do you, do you have? Do you, do you, what you need to
Yes, that, that is, that is clear to me. We will, we will compile, present, and if it's an elected board, we will, we will add it regardless.
And you know, would be, would be great is if we could actually have a warrant article, have the warrant done with all the numbers and, and everything buttoned up. And I think we voted to close the warrant soon enough. So we could do that. So that when we actually send it out, like we have to send it out, we could actually have everything in the, in there. Because what, what, what I find difficult is we, we put the warrant with, you know, the bare bones information, but funding.
Oh, right. Right.
It's much better to have it all done ahead of time. So when we send it out to the townspeople, it's actually in the it's kind of like when you would send people out with a, with a sample ballot. They actually look on that ballot, who they're actually going to vote for. You know, same thing. The articles should be written in such a way that everybody knows all the facets of every article, what they're going to vote on when they show up there.
Makes sense.
I mean, it's a great, I mean, that's, that's something we strive for. We never seem to quite get.
Last year, we had a discussion about why, you know, why we couldn't have the same sort of voter documentation that we have at like a state election.
Yeah, it's simple because, because we're not, we, we don't, we're not paid employees. We're all volunteers. And you know, we're all trying to get our act together soon enough. It's difficult.
Placehold I want to throw out there is as you think about grants for the culvert. I think we're going to have one or two articles required to draw funding for the president work. Right. I think it'd probably be smart to get in front of that special account.
Did we decide we need to do that now?
No, no, I'm just saying.
No, no, but, no, because my, my thinking was, you know, I, I don't want to, I mean, we are talking about the warrant. I mean, if all else fails, you know, one of those, you know, single year override questions. If, if there was no other way to fund, I think it sounds like we do have the money, but if, if we had some kind of a crisis, we'd probably put it on the May art, May meeting anyways, not, not this one. But we can always do that one year.
There also needs to be an ARPA article in that, you know, the money needs to be committed to a contract.
I don't think that, that doesn't
Do that here. We don't need to put that on our
But do you think that's a future agenda topic when you get to it?
We are running out of, we are, we're running out of this calendar year.
Yeah. So if town meeting doesn't need to do that, great.
And then, yeah, the other thing that you mentioned was that there was a request from Ellen about the date that the warrant closes.
Yeah. So town meeting schedules for November 18th, and we closed the warrant one month ahead of time on October 18th, which is a Friday and town hall is closed. So there's this request from the town clerk, because you know, someone needs to be here to receive citizen petitions in person to change that date to the day before Thursday, the 17th, which
Do you make that motion now? Do we have this?
So it, it wasn't listed as an agenda item. I think it's a reasonable item underneath special town meeting article discussion.
I'd, I'd make a motion to amend the, the special town meeting warrant closing date to October 17th.
See, always in October. Yeah, you're right. October. Yes. Yeah.
So it to, so that it actually closes on the day of the town, the town hall is open, we can actually receive citizen petitions by that day.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? All right. Great. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. So this was, this was helpful also, I think for me, clarifying sort of the process of how the, the warrant gets put together. I think that was one of my, I don't know. I feel like it would be useful to have it like written down. There's, there's a lot of like oral history like about the process. But now it'll be probably some of it will be in the minutes. So that will be helpful.
Yeah, I think I think everything we're talking about is, is driven by vast general law. And the other thing, we probably should use the, the town moderator as a resource.
And I think, yeah, there, there are some things also in the, in the bylaws about, about town meeting, but more about the annual town meeting than special town meetings. But you're a good point about the moderator as well. So All right.
It's like that when Jay Byer got zero funding and he earned every penny.
All right. So any other comments on special town meeting article discussion? You should, we'll expect you to get more in and we'll send you things as well. I know there are like, there are standard things that we do at the special town meeting. So probably cannibalizing previous years.
Right. Move, move money into FinCom reserve. You know, so that, you know, from, from free cash. So that we have it for emergencies if we need to before the May meeting.
So this is also relevant to this agenda topic. I'm speaking with our accounting team, free cash will be certified while in advance of their anticipation is by the end of October. They're going to submit everything mid to late September. So mid to late October, we'll, we'll have certain
All right. Are we ready to move on? All right. So then 13, so CMR PC fiscal 25 alternate delegate. So Mike, I know you had expressed an interest in that if your schedule allowed for it. How's it looking?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I would move to appoint Mike Maroli as the CMR PC fiscal 2025 alternate delegate.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mike. So all in favor? Great. All right. Yeah. Thank you, Mike. That's, that's great to have that. And thank you, Jason, for doing it last year. So and, and also for letting us know what it was all about, because I think that was helpful.
Yeah. Honestly, the notes are probably the best.
All right. So then other topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the meeting. I mean, we did mention that we will be potentially voting to go into executive session. Relating. Yeah. So we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. So were there any other topics? Okay. Any other old business that we needed to bring up?
Is there any update on the Plain Street? Hartford Ave East, are you going to do that in your?
Okay. All right. Yeah. Good, good segue into our town administrator report, item 16. Jeremy?
Thank you. So I'll start with that. So I had the opportunity to meet with Hopedale Town Administrator earlier this week. After meeting with other concerned parties the week before. So principally, it seemed that a, a number of issues were, were kind of tied together in ways that I understood, but ultimately didn't prove productive in the end. So their Hopedale Planning Board, as we've discussed in this board before, Planning Board had voted to remove the order of condition for certificate of occupancy of intersection improvements on Plain Street and Hartford Avenue East. So that means the facility that was built on Plain Street in, in Hopedale has received a certificate of occupancy and will have, you know, freight tenants, regardless of if there is intersection improvements or not. So I am of the opinion that it's a benefit to folks traveling to, from and through Mendon to have that intersection improved. it's a benefit to, uh, folks traveling to, from, and through Mendon to have, um, that intersection improved. Um, there is, uh, a bond set aside for that intersection improvement. Um, the planning board order of condition says if Mendon does not grant the street opening permit within twenty-four months of the certificate of occupancy, um, that bond is released and the contractor is no longer under an obligation to do the intersection improvements. So, uh, the clock's about to be ticking on the decision for the town, um, to, uh, grant a street opening permit to improve this intersection. Um, I have reached out to the contractor to, uh, make sure that, uh, to, to ask that they resubmit, um, their street opening permit um, to Highway, um, to bring here, um, so we have, you know, we're not working on outdated information or other assumptions. Um, so my anticipation is that that will be presented to this board, um, within the next meeting or two.
Was there a discussion about the need to actually have, uh, a plan put in front of our planning board before we start tearing up our road and improving the intersection? At least the part of it that actually is amended, because if you look at that diagram from National Grid, it shows that Hartford Ave East is entirely amended.
Mm-hmm.
So anything they're going to do to that intersection needs to be, I, I believe our, our planning board needs to review it, and, and the issue I had from the very beginning of all of this was, we were told that our, our planning had reviewed and approved the, the plan. I mean, besides all the other ancillary issues that we spoke about. And I spoke with the planning board chair, and he said, well, if the whole thing was in, was in Hopetale, then we would at least need to see it. But that was when the understanding was that the town line was going down the middle of Hartford Ave East, but it doesn't. Entire roadway is amended. So certainly if the order, if there's money in there for the contractor to pay to improve the intersection, there needs to be plans, and our planning board needs to see those and approve them. And they never have, and we were told that they did, and I'm told they didn't, so I, I don't know what the real, I don't, I have to take people's word for it, but we really should get the plan and get it to the planning board and get it through that process.
So not only, not my, my, my plan is that, um, once this street opening permit comes to Highway and before the board, um, um, involving planning in the process as well, so, um, I'm not sure what they've seen or not, um, but whatever I see and whatever you see, we'll get to planning board.
My, my suggestion is, is that you reach out to your counterpart, Hope to, who is a really good guy and very organized, and ask him for the plan, and ask him, did you ever actually send it, because we never generated it, right? I mean, so it should, you should ask him, can you send it to, you know, our planning board clerk? So we can look at it, because once we see if it, i- if it's, if, if they approve it, then sure, we can, we can approve the road, you know, the road opening permit.
So the, the, the sequence or the, the, um, preferred sequence would be planning sees it before this board sees it.
Yeah, I, I don't want it to start tearing the road open until we have a plan that's been approved.
Set the consent board too.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree.
We can certainly do that. Thank you for that. Um, what else, uh, or, or, I mean, where do we want to go from here, so, um, uh, right before, um, I started my tenure here, we had the resignation of our finance director, treasurer collector, um, and we appointed the assistant treasurer collector to an interim role. Um, she, uh, Tracy Carty, uh, attended her resignation earlier today, effective, um, September nineteenth. Um, so I had, um, a slight inclination of this and, um, had, um, a, a contracted interim kind of waiting, ready to go. Um, I have a, um, um, a proposal, um, that has not been approved by anybody, um, or sent anywhere, but, um, I'm having discussion and, um, there will be a candidate here, uh, next week, um, to sit with me and the current incumbent to try to learn, um, what the needs are going forward. Um, so I'm also in the process of getting an additional proposal, um, because of the magnitude of this. Um, I, I have, I have two and we're executing one, uh, but it's important, especially going into, um, tax recap season, um, to make sure we have, um, a certified professional identified in the treasurer collector role, so I'll become to this board on the eighteenth, um, hopefully to, um, get it, um, you know, it's a statutory role that we have someone in the treasurer collector, um, so there, there'll be a vote relative to that, and I'll make sure the, the language is, um, you know, satisfies our statutory obligations, um, hopefully, um, I'll have a kind of competitive process for you, um, and outline that, uh, but at the very minimum, I would like someone in a very short-term role, um, to be able to fill our obligations and then have a competitive process for a longer system. And then in our September retreat for the Collin Center, which is my next point, um, figure out what our, you know, ultimate long-term solution is. Uh, to that point, um, there is a, um, so we are confirmed, uh, Collin Center Retreat as a, um, ultimate deliverable from the organizational um, study that they were contracted to do, um, on September twenty-eighth from nine to one. I think it's important, or I think would be useful, um, for the space to not be here, where we have our typical meeting, so I'd take your input on where you would like to have this, where you, where you, we've historically had it, what you think would be useful. Before I get to that, um, I also circulated, uh, the memo that Collin Center, um, wrote as a, um, output from their, their interviews and will serve as a basis of our retreat, um, and a, um, a worksheet, um, that I would, the Collin Center would like you all to fill out and identify your priorities and send back to them by the thirteenth to kind of facilitate our discussions. My initial thought was to have the, um, session in the police, uh, department community room, it's a collaborative space, um, and different from here, kind of get people out of their element a little bit, but still sit in a situation where you can all see each other face to face, um, but if you have other suggestions, I, I'd take them now.
What, what time do we say we're going to meet on that Saturday?
Nine to one.
I'll throw up, they go to library, um, I, I'm, I'm in agreement, we've done the police station a few times, so.
Does the library have a team set up to be able to record the session?
They do.
They do in the space.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, lower level, it's, uh.
Is that, is that space distinct from, uh, open space that would be utilized by the public on a weekend morning?
It's kind of, it's not, so it's, the library is open, it's, yeah, the.
It's also the senior center.
That's true, there is this, but there, they, there is not the team set up there, there is not a.
We can bring a monitor and a, well, we could set that up.
Or we could meet in our, our, for downstairs.
There is the conference room downstairs. Okay.
And that's schools we've had to, so.
I mean, the, the downstairs meeting room is comfortable and I'm open to that.
Yeah, that, that works.
Thanks.
All right, excellent. Um, so on the compensation classification study, um, I spoke with, uh, um, a member of the Collin Center, um, about community compact grants, um, we're, we're eligible for a, a handful of best practice grants. Um, so I'm looking at, um, applying, hopefully next week, um, to a couple, but one would be on a compensation classification, um, uh, study, which in the Collin Center's estimation is almost universally approved and funded at their, a reasonable level that's requested. Um, so I'm hopeful, um, that that application can get in or approved quickly, and we can have it entirely funded, um, on a grant um, piece, and we don't have to, um, ask for a, a free cash appropriation to do a compensation classification study. It's something that the Collin Center does and does well, um.
So is that like a rolling deadline for that?
They, uh, it opened a week or two ago, um, and so, yeah, it's rolling.
Okay.
Um, they, um, the, the person with the Collin Center who I talked to said they haven't seen money run out before the end of October. Um, so I'm, you know, if I get an application in by the middle of September, I'm fairly confident about.
Does any Collin Center is the party that's going to do the study?
So they, I'm using the Collin Center estimation, estimate, um, so I'm using, yes, I need to, I need to apply for a grant, I need to have a, a cost basis somehow, why am I asking for this money, and I'm going to use the proposal that I get from Collin Center for, uh, because they're an agency of the Commonwealth, it doesn't require a fully fledged, or as you all know, fully fledged competitive procurement process, um, and because of their Commonwealth agency, they're almost, um, they're, they're, since they're almost entirely, they're often, uh, below what would be a otherwise market rate, um, and, um, I, you know, felt confident with their work that they performed for the town before, so that would be my first identified vendor, if the board wants to open it up to a broader procurement, we could as well. But my, I'm using the Collin Center as my, um.
So we're not bound to the Collin Center by using them.
But it, um, allows us to start quicker.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, the other part of my question, the timing in terms of how quickly can this move?
Yeah, uh, I asked, so Mary Carty is the, um, HR lead there, um, who connected me with her colleague, who runs this subset of the HR, um, and they couldn't commit to a date just because it depends on grant approval, um, so I have Jen O'Neil and HR working on a list of bespoke titles, uh, because their fee is based upon, um, you know, individual titles, that's the research they have to do, it's driven by how many individuals they have to look at. Um, so, uh, they, they couldn't commit to something right now until we get them a list of titles and we get our grant approved.
An output frame or offsite feed this potentially.
In that, what are the titles, what are some of the titles we do or don't want them to look at? Um, I communicated about our, um, goal to have, you know, we're in fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six collective bargaining agreements for all of our units except for one right now, um, and that we anticipated using this study for our twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine units, which starts in the spring of calendar year twenty-six, so they have that as a touchdown that we, we, we need it by the end of calendar year twenty-five.
So, so the question has come up of whether we might want to consider other, um, entities who could do a study like this, I mean, it, you know, we've worked a lot with the Collin Center, I don't know where other options are, not that I have any issues with the Collin Center, but it's good to like find out, um, you know, I guess I would be interested in finding out who else does this work and like, I know, I feel like, did, did I hear Upton did something similar with another organization?
So our, our procurement obligations, there is not a reasonable expectation, this will cost more than fifty thousand dollars, so, but there is reasonable expectation would be more than ten thousand dollars. Um, so we would just get three quotes, so I would take the list of titles that we were given, I would look at other municipalities which used entities which weren't the Collin Center, and I would shoot them the same information I shot over to Collin Center and say, give me an order, give me, give me a quote on this, um, and they would.
So in other words, because of that cost range, you don't have to go out for formal requests?
I don't, I don't have to put an RFP together, correct? I can just solicit three quotes.
Send an email.
Three quotes from, yeah, they have to be written, and I have to give the same parameters to all of them from businesses that regularly perform this type of service, so I can't, you know.
I mean, and I don't have an opinion one way or the other, we, we've worked a lot with the Collin Center, so I could see how that could be an advantage, because they already know our organization very thoroughly, but I still wonder if other people know of. It, oh, yes, it's critical, so.
I likely would ask two other vendors for quotes anyway, regardless of.
Okay, I mean, I think, yeah, it seems, it's good to know what our options are in general.
But, uh, my anticipation is to use the Collin Center as the basis for the grant application, uh, because that's the most solid number that we can get right now. Um, and then move forward, so I will update the board, but I'm, I'm hopeful that in, I don't know, October, we would have a determination on the grant and be able to get quotes quickly, and then by November, kind of start the actual process of. Um, and part of what they do is determining our peer, our peer groups, which is, uh, we haven't, we have a determination of what we think a lot of our peer groups would be, uh, but I think that's when it's important to involve the bargaining units, um, to be a part of, collaborative part of this process to say, no.
So it's committed to that.
Yeah, and that helps that.
They'll need to trust whatever they have.
Agreed. Um, so that's where we're at with that, um. The, uh, town hall project, uh, we have a punch list meeting next week, so there's been twenty thousand dollars allocated in, in ARPA funds to kind of, um, finish up a number of things here, seating, um, some windows, signage, some painting, some outlets, a punch list style.
Say seating?
Speaking too loudly, thank you.
The seating, the seating, putting, putting seed is, you know, that's not supposed to cost us anything.
Uh, I know very little about it, I've been asked to attend this meeting and learn about it.
I'm just, so, give us a heads up, that is one thing that we.
You talked about it.
We have talked about it, because they were going to.
I think the windows, those, that was a separate, much more than punchless, that was a separate punch. Be the mission, character work, feel the previous TA on, so that's sort of in flux, I think that's bigger than punchless. Based on the funding, they started to look at architects that do historical restoration.
Dan had, Dan Byer had mentioned that in his, um, advantageous position in the middle of a lot of this stuff, um, between facilities and historical, uh, but I just want to mention that was, that was part of our discussion, but you're right, it is outside punchless, and I will say Dan mentioned that as, as a separate, um, cost bucket. Um, and then, uh, my last point, um, about just continually make sure that ARPA is at everyone's, at the forefront of everyone's mind, so as we continue to get, um, capital requests and, and evaluate that through the capital, through the working group, um, I think that will become a little bit more clear for the group. Um, and that's, that, that's all for me.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, so item seventeen is, uh, future agenda topics. Um, I know, yeah, Mike Goddard, you had mentioned a couple, right, so possibly talking about ARPA?
Yeah.
Getting, getting, we need to, uh, have a discussion about what's left and what we're going to do with it. Uh, was there, were there other points related to that?
The capital, capital group wants to get in front of the board, I think we sent them the last meeting, the second meeting in September, just to give an update process, and it's kicked off.
Yep, uh, but also give you sort of a view into.
Hey, some more policy, policy and procedure stuff.
Good stuff. Um, but also the, the current inventory as it's, as we see, I'm not sure if we started to collect anything new.
Yep.
Uh, but sort of just a checkpoint with select board to see, I guess we're starting, right, five months before we did last year.
Do you want to buy finance, or is there a representation there?
Um, Adam, who actually has now, and I don't know if Mike's still on, but I'd reach out to Mike to look for more new FinCom representation, but Adam, it's been an active member.
All right, any other, um, I know we're, we're going to be talking, hearing from the, uh, senior and community center.
They'll be here, and will there also be a representative from Mass DOT here to talk about the Route Sixteen project? Um, so I was visited by DOT, uh, earlier this week about right of entry and right of way, um, documents that the board will have to approve and sign, um, so they'll have a representative from their right of way division here to talk about that.
Does that mean they're coming close to implementation?
So I received at about, I don't know, four o'clock today, their one hundred percent design documents, which, um, were, um, kind of, you know, baffled me by the amount of information that was there, so I was trying to distill it a little bit before I, um, gave to the group, but yeah, they, um, are still anticipating a May of next year bidding of the project. Um, so their design, their right of way documents show, um, where they need entry and small taking and resetting and, and what the intersection design looks like, so, um, those documents and plans on the right of way will be shared with the board before the next meeting, um, and then somebody from DOT will be here to talk specifically about.
DOT is surprising me with their on-time readiness. It's great. I think if the next agenda gets full, I'll kick capital out. Even though.
So we still talk about ARPA though. Well, I mean, we need to, that needs to be committed, that needs to be contracted by the end of this calendar year. We don't have, there aren't too many months left, so, um.
The last thing to spend money.
There are, but we have to, we have to decide and I guess, and a couple other things that are, that I know are upcoming. I mean, we will need to, the Board of Assessors will need to be doing the tax classification hearing with us after the special town meeting. So I know they have, they have some time constraints as well. So like that will be, you know, after so our, our special town meeting will be November eighteenth, I believe. So sometime following that. And I don't know, like, if it will work out for it to be the, we have our regular Wednesday meeting a couple days after that, I believe we have it on the that we have that week, that is, I think it'll be actually that Wednesday, the twentieth. So I don't know if it'll work out to do it on that date. Of November. Sorry, I know it's a ways off. The other, but the other thing that we we had talked about before and we didn't narrow in on it, but we need to do the retreat for the goal setting. That I think now that we have the Collin Center retreat nailed down, I think we we should actively work towards choosing a date for our goal setting retreat. And I know, Jeremy, you had thoughts about that process, but like you you suggested it should be early on in the fiscal year. And again, time is marching on.
Right, yeah, September takes us through Q one.
Yeah. So maybe we can, maybe we can pin that down soon.
Okay, I'll, I'll send some possible dates. I know, I think, I think it's also useful to have a facilitator to do this. So I'll see, there's, there's a number of folks who do this regularly, retired town administrators to do this regularly. So let me see who.
Nice.
I would suggest you reach out to Jim Purcell. To see if he has any interest. Actually, another topic we should, probably not a bad idea to talk about is, you know, do we want to have another holiday party?
I thought that was pretty successful.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I think that's a great idea. So I think
I think especially with our new town administrator, some opportunity for
Yes, that's, that's a great point. I think it would be great to do that again for, so that was an event that was to thank our, our community. So it was open to both employees and board and committee members and then also the, yeah, the broader, broader Menden community. And I know, so I guess that question would be, you know, what, what funds would be available for such an event?
The ARPA funds.
Yeah, I mean, I think there is a great optic of using not local funds.
Okay, so we can maybe bring that up for discussion when we talk through what's left of ARPA.
If it, if it's like, just discuss it.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, right.
If it happens two years in a row.
Right, and I
Well, it has, it has been, it no, it COVID, it was happening on a regular basis and then COVID happened.
And I think, right, I think, I I agree, once it's, once people know that it's likely coming and we can, earlier we can schedule it and get people to put it on their calendars, we can
Feels like we need like
More people.
A calendar, I think, so it'd be regular.
Ah, that is actually, sorry, that is a question that came up. I mentioned it to Jeremy. So it came up at the the library trustees meeting, that it would be really useful to have a community events calendar that, so it it's a question that, yeah, Jeremy was going to start looking into a little bit. But yeah, I think that that's a great point. I mean, our, the website calendar is official meetings and town business. And I think that it's important to have that, but I think it would be a great service to the community and the various active groups to have a larger community calendar so that even well, so it came up with the the library trustees that the the cardboard boat race was the same night as the Lions Club sponsored circus. And both of those events were planned many months in advance, but they weren't in communication with each other.
We have the, you know, the Santa parade and the different things that the brothers of the brush do, things that
Right.
It's a great idea to have in the Harbors Parade, you know, just to have it all in in a community calendar.
Yeah.
So everybody can plan around it, the Little League Parade, you know.
Yeah, my
And there is one other thing is, and I'm just throwing it out there, because of the the hundredth anniversary of troop one vending.
Oh.
Is coming up in twenty twenty six, twenty six.
Alright.
Sorry, come on that.
So that may, maybe is it, yes, a topic we can bring up, you can fill us in on the, what you, what you find out.
Yeah, I, I, I won't yet obligate them, but I will have a discussion with the cultural council because I think this feels like something within their purview to be able to coordinate something townwide and determine the the relevance and appropriateness of what should be on the calendar. I don't want select board voting to put on the Little League Parade or, you know, you know what I mean?
No, 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 but the idea of having it all in one place that's accessible to everybody.
And and it's ongoing, right. I mean, it's like the, we have, I mean, we all missed the town crier and now we have a monthly newspaper, Menden Upton, but it's events are really just what's coming up in the next month and and ideally, people would want to know like, oh, what's going on in July? So like, as soon as those dates are like settled on, they could be in a calendar. Like next year's cardboard boat race, which will apparently be the twenty fifth or the twenty five years of cardboard boat races. So it's not that they have, I don't think they have them every single year, but it's twenty, it's the twenty fifth anniversary. Okay, great. So, yeah, and I know, right, people are always welcome to send suggestions for agenda topics to Jeremy as well. I believe Katie also, so, yeah, as well as me. So, you know, so we, you know, keep them coming. So our next item on the agenda is our next meeting. So we have two two meetings that are already scheduled. So one is that we have this planning board joint, joint meeting on Monday, September sixteenth at six P M to discuss the housing production plan. So both boards need to vote on that. So that it will be hybrid. It, so there will be a presentation from CMR PC about the housing production plan, sort of the we heard from them earlier, but so this is, this is the final step for what we need to do is to have both boards vote. And rather than having two separate presentations for each board and separate voting, this gives us the opportunity to consolidate and collaborate, right, and ha- have, have us both. The questions can be addressed, you know, with both boards there. So that's coming up. And then we have our regular meeting two weeks from today, our regular Wednesday meeting. Alright, so anything else? Okay, so I guess for item nineteen, Jeremy, do you want, is there any sort of like introduction to this before, like before I make the motion?
Yeah, we, we received information relative to highway collective bargaining agreement after, or within the forty eight hours before the the meeting was posted, which we announced at the beginning of the meeting. So we added it as a final agenda item to go to executive session to discuss.
So see, so I moved to enter executive session pursuant to session MG
Sorry.
Section MGL thirty A, section twenty one A. Reason number three to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares highway collective bargaining agreement. And furthermore, the board will not reconvene an open session. So we would be adjourning from executive session.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion? Alright, and so this would be, I believe, a roll call vote?
Yes.
So, roll call vote, so all in favor, Brugos, aye?
Goddard, aye.
Cooter, aye.
Raleigh, aye.
Okay, so we will not be returning to open session to adjourn. And so we will then go to executive session.
Have a good night.
So thank you all for joining us online. Stop the recording. Yes, thank you.